I'd like to call or order the meeting of the Regular Planning Commission of June the 5th. Noah, would you please lead us in pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Present.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Here.
Chair Kistner?
Present. Our next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comment? Close public comment. The next items are consent items. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommendations, recommended actions.
I would like to pull 4.2 of the minutes.
I would like to pull 4.1.
All right, then 4.3 is a request- Central business district.
To clarify, did you pull 4.2?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry. My question is about 4.2 on the minute, so I really am, I wanted to pull 4.1. That was a miss- Thank you. Thank you. No, that hasn't been pulled. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't-
We read all of them.
Oh, okay. My bad.
Twenty-nine square feet at the existing residence of Core 68 Hollis Lane. Project continued from May 15th, 2018 meeting. So now we're down to 4.3, which is a request for a design review exemption to replace an existing 762-square-foot shade structure located at 2070 Spring Street with approximately 366-square-feet shade structure suitable for supporting solar panels.
Excuse me, Chair Kistner, that's 4.4. I think you skipped 4.3.
Yeah.
No, I had read that before.
4.3 is the green biotics.
Yeah, I had read that.
Oh, I didn't hear you-
I did read that, did I not?
Okay. I didn't hear it.
Yeah, that's the green biotics one on Main Street.
You didn't hear it either.
Do I hear a motion to approve 4.2, 4.3, 4.4?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
I have a point of question. I'm sorry, we got to the voting a little quick. Can I ask a question, please, about 4.3?
Go ahead.
That's, to confirm, that's an approval of the denial resolution. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We can go back to the voting. Thank you. Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Abstain.
Chair Kistner?
I abstain from the one on Hollis Lane. I live right next to it. Other than that, yes on the other ones.
Don't we have to separate those out, then?
You need separate votes on the-
All right. Why don't we separate, shall we separate all of these?
All right, let's have motions on all of them.
Could I, just a point of clarity. Commissioner Monette, you pulled the minutes with the intention of, it wasn't clear why they were pulled. That's what I was-
I have a question about 4.2.
On the minutes.
On the minutes. And Commissioner Hardy also pulled the minute.
I was there, so I can't vote on that. It can't be on the consent agenda and have a meaningful vote.
You had something that you want to talk about, 4.1?
Well, is it the right time to do that?
Yes.
Yeah. I was just curious. It seems to me that we're hearing that tonight, but there's no, we didn't hear it last time, did we? And there's no, nothing here that says what happened to it.
That's correct. So this item was on the agenda last meeting. However, we did not have a quorum, and so it was continued. So that is correct. The minute should be corrected to reflect-
It should reflect that, yeah.
-that it was a continued item from the last meeting.
Okay.
So as a matter of meeting management, Director House, do we need to withdraw that prior motion before we can put new motions in play?
For clarity reasons, that would be helpful.
I will withdraw my motion.
I'll second the withdrawal.
No, you guys confused me thoroughly.
There doesn't need to be a, to withdraw a motion, you don't need to vote on it.
Okay.
So it's withdrawn and then a new motion to move forward.
But we voted on it, so we need technically to overturn it.
For clarity-
Well, I make a motion that we accept 4.1 with the modifications just described.
Commissioner Pont has a point of order that we, do we need to, by withdrawing the motion, do we need to invalidate the voting that was in-
Because we voted on it.
-process?
So we need to vote on the withdrawal, I'm afraid.
Do we?
Yeah.
Director House?
I don't believe the vote was finished, so was it formalized?
Enough votes for it to pass, but-
Let's just do it this way. Let me just take a vote on each one of these, and then we'll solve that. May I have a motion on 4.1?
I'll move the minutes of May 15th.
As amended?
As amended. I already made that motion.
Yes.
Okay. You just made that motion again?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Chair Kistner?
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Abstain.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Abstain.
All right, may I have a motion on 4.2?
I will move 4.2, as recommended by staff.
Second? I can't second it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
I abstain from that one.
And Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion on 4.3? That's a use permit that we're denied on the beauty shop.
I make a motion to accept the denial.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Abstain.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. May I have a motion on 4.4, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Well, we got through that. The next item is the public hearings, and we have 5.1, which is a tentative parcel map and design review applications requesting approving of a parcel map to adjust the subdivision of an existing 14.75-acre parcel currently developed with one single-family home into two new parcels, 4.25 and .05 acres respectively. No development on the newly-created .5-acre parcel is proposed at this time. This action further proposes finding that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA under a Class II categorical exemption. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner, members of the commission. The item before you tonight, as identified, is a tentative parcel map and design review application proposing to subdivide an existing 14-3/4-acre parcel, currently developed with one single-family home into two new parcels, 14 and 1/4 and 1/2 acre respectively. And the existing parcel is located at 2525 Majona Avenue, as you've identified. No development is proposed as a component of this project. And the staff report and resolution identifies that the action is exempt under a Class 32 categorical exemption from SEQA. The project site is located, as mentioned, 2525 Majona Avenue. It's in the southeast, I'm sorry, southwestern corner of St. Helena. Zooming in, this is an aerial photograph of the site, highlighting the parcel lines there. 14.3/4 acres. You can see the single-family home developed kind of to the middle and southern portion of it with some orchard agricultural activities just north of it. This is the general plan and zoning graphic identifying the parcel is designated as ag, however it is right in the location, right in the transition of low-density residential as parcels transition from that into the agricultural areas of that part of the city. Putting the proposed map before the commission, the parcel is in the bottom-right corner. It shows the half-acre subdivision being proposed to be carved out of the existing 14-3/4-acre parcel. The red square is identifying the area of residential development currently on the 14-3/4-acre parcel. Zooming in, this shows a more detailed graphic of the proposed half-acre lot with the access and frontage on Majona there. Getting into the analysis, the site is designated agricultural by the general plan and A20 by the zoning district. As previously identified, it is an area of transition between the low-density residential neighborhoods of the city and agriculture. Located, is located at the end of Majona and just outside the urban limit line. The general plan and zoning designation allow the parcels, allow the existing parcel to be subdivided based on a maximum density of one unit per every five acres of parcel area. Given that the parcel is just under 15 acres, that would allow the parcel to be subdivided into a maximum of two lots to be created. The A20 zoning district further requires that any new parcel not exceed a maximum of one-half acre in size. And that's intended to allow the viability of agricultural uses to continue on the site. The project is identified as meeting all the requirements for subdivision in the A20 zoning district, as identified in 17.20.070. The number of general plan policies in the staff report, and staff has identified the project is consistent with them. One of the most prevalent ones, or referenced in the zoning code, is 2.6.1, which identifies that new development should be, occur in a logical and orderly manner with well-defined boundaries and consistent with the ability to provide urban services. Staff has found that to be the case. It's worth noting that the subdivision, it is just outside the urban limit line. However, there's a water line that runs through the parcel, and it will receive city water through that element of the infrastructure, and it is proposing a future development would use a septic system. The subdivision process requires that the city council review or have an opportunity to review the proposed parcel map should the commission choose to approve it. And then if that, the city council did not review it or make any modifications, then they would, the applicant would continue on with a final map process. Water neutrality is required for any future development on the site, so the project has been conditioned to comply with the requirements of water neutrality. As is growth management, the city of St. Helena limits all residential development to a maximum of nine new units a year, and so any future development would be subject to that limitation. It is also worth noting that the project to develop that future parcel, should it be approved, would be subject to the affordable housing requirements of the city, which, given that it's less than four units, would likely be fee payments, housing impact fee payment. But that would be a condition of approval of future development and is identified and referenced in the resolution before the commission. Given that, it's recommended by the planning and community improvement department that the planning commission find the project exempt from the requirements of SEQA as a Class 32 infill project and also within the scope of the 93 general plan and zoning EIR and accept the required findings and approve the requested tentative map and design review to subdivide the existing 14-3/4-acre parcel into two lots. As previously mentioned, no development is proposed as a part of this decision. And it is worth noting, two letters came in today after the report was written, both in support of the project. The commission has those on the dais before you. And with that, I am available for any questions. The applicant's here, as is his engineering representative, and they can fill in any information staff can't provide.
Anyone have any questions for staff?
I have a question for staff. Can you tell me about the lot that's in the southwesterly direction against that sort of stream? I guess it's sort of a, well, it's sort of confusing to me because it's in the city, right? But it's not colored a particular zoning. Is that because it's part of a stream?
No, so this is a very unique parcel.
Okay.
And actually, the applicant provided me some additional information. So at some point, all these parcels were likely one. There was a subdivision process, and I think it went through in the county. And then there's also some right-of-way eminent domain situation that came into B with regards to PG&E. The power lines run kind of right along the boundary of the city, which is identified here, where the white squares are and then the red line that separates that from the oddly-shaped white parcel. So essentially, and there's a lot of research that needs to go into this, when the parcels were subdivided and split, the jurisdiction between the city and the county split them. There's some conditions placed on the, either the eminent domain or the process that split the parcels, and the applicant maybe can fill this in, which condition that no future development could occur. So that is staff's understanding as to why that has no land use designation in St. Helena. Staff is not sure that that's legal, and we will be researching this with the city attorney's office as a part of the general plan update process, given that it's our understanding that you cannot utilize that methodology to limit development on a legally-created parcel, especially when it's split jurisdiction.
So given that, is it premature to be looking at this adjacent parcel with the action proposed in front of us at this time? Should the rest of sort of this complicated history be adequately researched? Or what's your, the staff's opinion?
It has no influence on the application before the council or the commission.
Okay.
Is it the county and not the city?
It just, the, right now, there's no designation, land use designation on that side. There's no development potential that could occur. Staff needs to work with the city attorney's office, likely the planning commission, the city council, to come up with a determination on what's appropriate there with regards to a land use designation. But again, that has no bearing on the proposal to create the half-acre parcel and its compliance with the city's general plan and zoning criteria.
Okay. I had a question. I was wondering if the placement of, if it does get developed and the placement of the house is moved, will there be required, will they be required to do another biological evaluation?
Any development would have to occur within the half-acre parcel, and the biological evaluation identified that there is no habitat value within that half acre.
But it mentioned, given the placement of the house, they had an idea of where a house might go. Given that placement, there was no problem. My question is, if that placement has changed down the road when they, when someone actually is going to build something, will there be another requirement for another biological evaluation?
If there were concerns over biological impacts associated with development of the site, staff would require a biological evaluation.
Is, I would feel comfortable having that be a condition that if the position of the house, because that evaluation was made, it says in the evaluation that it was made, and it only applies to this parcel if the house is built where they say they're going to build the house. So it wouldn't be automatic that they'd have to, I'm just asking, would it be automatic they'd have to do another one? Or should that be a condition of this one?
Well, so future development is discretionary and will require a SEQA determination. So the fact that that future development will not have an impact on the environment would have to be documented and analyzed.
Okay, so you're saying, yes, if they shifted the placement of the house, it would happen?
If there was a concern, it would have to be addressed.
Okay, but just shifting it, just shifting it would not generate a concern necessarily if nobody was thinking about it?
I couldn't, I don't want to speculate because they could shift it one foot. You know, it depends on more of the specifics. But generally, staff visits the site, a biologist visits the site. The proposed location of this parcel does not provide habitat value. And in addition, there is a code-mandated creek setback that would be required from any area that is within a riparian designation. So the likelihood of that shifting, moving into a biologically-sensitive area, is limited, given staff's current knowledge. But again, any future development would be required to be analyzed under SEQA.
Okay. Thank you.
Would there be any discretionary approval required, other than design review?
I mean, it would depend on if the applicant was requesting something that required a discretionary approval. So that would be a use permit or a variance if they were trying to encroach into setback, something along those lines.
Understood, but it's my understanding, and I know this has come up with respect to at least two projects I can think of in the fairly recent past, that our discretion with respect to design review-only applications is limited, and the environmental analysis is limited accordingly. So I just want to, honestly, I want to be sure that Commissioner Monette has an answer that really addresses her concerns.
That's an excellent point. If the, if the commission wishes, they could address that through conditioning the map to require a final map to include a building envelope that did not encroach on any biologically-sensitive areas. There's ways to address that, but that is an excellent point.
Thank you.
I have another, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Commissioner Pont. Apologize. I'm sort of curious about the water and sewer lines in this area. Do they stub out on Madrona currently?
There's actually a sewer line that runs through the property, but there'd have to be an easement that covers it. And there is a water line that comes to the property. They had to put their own separate meter in, but there is a water line.
But there is a sewer line as well?
I misspoke when I was presenting. I was crossing up the sewer and water lines.
Oh. Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily need to be on septic?
That's correct.
Okay.
John?
Well, then, is connection to the sewer line required?
Right.
It is?
Yes.
What about to city water? Oh, it is, because it read that they were going to stay on the well. So is that going to, because the water analysis was done based on them using the well. So would that have any impact on that? That was my understanding, anyway. Because it's not hooked up to the sewer.
They will have to compulsory connect the city sewer and the city water system.
Oh, okay, so maybe that will impact the water analysis as well?
Because the well is on the separate parcel, and the greatest new parcel will be separate.
I would assume that the water would be looked at if they do something in addition to the house that's already there.
The water use analysis will be prepared for this parcel when they, it moves forward and they decide to develop it.
Well, that seems like maybe a new water analysis should be done if a house is going to be proposed for the new parcel, given that they'll have to hook up to the-
Well, let's, I'm with what? Any new building that we do, Bobby. John?
I've got several, but let's start with the sewer line. It shows it as a six-inch sewer line, for God's sakes. Is that a city-owned line? Does the city have an easement for it? Why would somebody put in a six-inch sewer line for a house?
I think the applicant could probably best answer that. I don't believe there is an easement on the parcel.
That's personal.
It's okay, we can get to it later.
I believe it's a private line, but they'll have to have an easement to-
Six inches. A six-inch private line. Holy Toledo. Okay. Seems a little excessive. At any rate, I do have some questions for staff. The map shows that it's, the parcel to be created would have a 30-foot frontage on city right-of-way. Is that correct? Yeah, it's that little piece right there.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's their, that's their access.
The access would be just kind of south of this, across the culvert. So it would become a shared access with the adjacent property.
Oh, it's doing a shared access, then? Okay. I assumed it was going to access the city right-of-way, right there, as it stubs out.
The parcel is proposed to touch the city right-of-way. That's a requirement of the zoning code.
Right.
But there's a culvert crossing there, and they are proposing to utilize that existing culvert.
Okay. Okay, so, all right. Okay. Is this a flag lot?
Not per the definition of zoning code.
Well, I'm reading the zoning code. It is connected to the street by a narrow strip of land. The largest portion of the lot is situated behind adjoining lots, which actually has frontage on the street. Because the only frontage they have on the street is that 30 feet. If you read the section, the A20, it simply says, "Flag lot development subject to provisions of Chapter 17112." It doesn't specify how wide the frontage is before it's considered to be a flag. And I would suggest that 30 feet, being less than twice the minimum for a flag lot, this one could qualify as a flag lot.
Okay.
All right, if it's a flag lot, then we have another separate set of findings to make for a flag lot.
That's correct.
Then I would suggest to the planning commission that this one should be put in abeyance until we have the separate set of findings we could, we have to make for a flag lot.
So staff did not identify it as a flag lot? So if the commission wishes to do so, then that is correct.
I'm thinking it is a flag lot, because the largest portion of the lot, I mean, the test for flag lot is in the definition for flag lot on page 12 of 26 of 1704. Flag lot, also known as a panhandle lot, means a lot which has less than the minimum required frontage on the public or private street. That's test one. Test two, is connected to a public or private street by a narrow strip of land and has the largest portion of the lot situated behind adjoining lots which front on the same public or private street. That's lot test two or three. Now, most of this lot is embedded in the remainder lot. I mean, there's a 20-foot strip right there in front. So the only access this has to city property is that 30-foot frontage, and that's it. So I would suggest that this qualifies as a flag lot. Or perhaps a pot lot, since it's got a short handle, but nonetheless, it qualifies as a flag lot. Particularly since there's no standard set in the A20 zone for what is the proper frontage to qualify for a flag lot. And 17112 doesn't seem to set a minimum frontage for a flag lot. So I'm going to suggest it sets, it calls for, what, 16 feet being the absolute minimum for a flag, but doesn't set a maximum. And I'm saying that 30 feet on a lot this size, I'm afraid should qualify as a flag lot. It's less than our minimum lot width. lot. It's less than our minimum lot width.
On the other hand, I mean, should we have a discussion now, or should we be asking questions now?
Go ahead.
I mean, on the other hand, yeah, so the question for Planning Director House is, yes, there's this weird stub in of 20 feet, but there's no structure on that stub, and it's not developable, because it's only 20 feet wide. I mean, it's definitely a strange lot. If this were considered a flag lot, how would that change the approval process for this Director House?
So as Commissioner Pot has identified, there are three additional findings that are required to approve a flag lot, and it actually requires a use permit in order to do so. I guess from the staff perspective, because there was no minimum lot frontage required, and there's a few other unique elements, staff did not look at as a flag. But based on the definition in the zoning code, the planning commission could do so, but it seems to be flexible either way from the staff perspective.
I'm, I'm just thinking, it clearly meets two of the three tests. And the third test, at this point, at least to my reading, is not clearly defined. But it could easily fall under it, because 30 feet is narrow, has less than our minimum lot width.
What do you see as a problem of not seeing it as a flag lot?
You know, I, this is an odd, odd lot. I mean, it's got that 20-foot strip in front that belongs to the remaindered parcel. Its access isn't even supposed to be the way it's designed from the access point it has on city right-of-way. So that makes it a doubly odd lot.
But do you see not having to have a use permit problematic in this case? I mean, is that, is that what you're thinking?
We're cutting, the recommendation here is to cut a lot in the A20, right? And if I can, I'd like to read from, "The purpose of the A20 district is to promote and implement the policies of the general plan to preserve agriculture land uses and to provide future orderly development as the urban limit line is adjusted to accommodate urban growth. District restricts the density of residential use and stipulates location and area of residential development to promote preservation of agricultural land use and to reduce impacts to the provision of infrastructure as the urban areas city expands." I would say that future orderly development, when you start cutting oddball flag lots, doesn't stand very well with orderly development. I mean, we have other lots in the A20 district, and the ones that were cut that I'm aware of tend to be boxes.
Right now, I think we should listen to the applicant and see what.
I'll have some comments, and I think it's an appropriate time for them. And I'll confess at the beginning that at this stage in my life, you know, relying on my memory of events 20-plus years ago is a somewhat hazardous enterprise. Nevertheless, the provision for half-acre parcels in the A20 zoning district is one for which I'm effectively responsible. It was part of the 1993 general plan update process, in which we proposed to redesignate and rezone significant areas of A5 to A20. There was a protest from some of the property owners, and I proposed this particular provision as a compromise, because I was fairly sure that without it, the redesignation and rezoning would not have three votes. With respect to the requirement for frontage, to the best of my recollection, the concern was that absent a requirement of that sort, we could have interior half-acre parcels that would require extensive driveways subtracting from the agricultural area of the remainder parcel. So with that concern in mind, I, I, I don't see this particular approach to frontage as problematic. I think the more interesting question is, you know, how does the scheme of access work in terms of that concern? But I don't find a compelling reason to overturn staff's determination that this is not a flag lot.
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Heim. I'm the applicant on behalf of the Sander LLC. Thank you all for giving it serious consideration the way you have. We were very thoughtful about the shape of this odd lot. The, there's, we were sharing the access over the existing culvert primarily because the alternative to using the frontage of 30 feet that's out there that would accommodate the new lot would have a greater environmental, environmental impact on the stream that's right there. So we'd have to add another section of culvert in order just for this lot to then cross the stream. So we thought it'd be more environmentally efficient to use the existing culvert. So in a sense, this lot has 60 feet of frontage, part of which is just an easement, okay? It has in fee 30 feet, but in fact, in fee and in easement, it will have 60 feet of frontage. I'd also suggest that if your code, the only identifying information, we have about a minimum access, it being 16 feet by criteria number one, then that we're, we're in excess of that, so we're, we're not failing to meet that requirement. The, the benefit of moving that, having that funny little strip, the driveway, once you get beyond that 30 feet of our fee ownership, is a private driveway servicing some estate residences and winery uses up there. But by moving it over, we moved sort of to the middle of the two, the two environmentally sensitive areas. Both, there's a creek to the, if I may just for simplicity, say to the right and to the left, and as well as already asphalted accesses. So by centering it like that, we are allowed ourselves to be in the least environmentally impacting area. There's also, along each of those strips are the limited amount of woodlands that the biological report referenced. So we were trying to be sensitive to those areas. I can further clarify for Commissioner Minette's question about, the, the comment that, that was made in the biological report about the proposed area for building, he was only contemplating the existing setbacks. So he knew that there was an envelope that was available. So it's only that, I believe it's a 20-foot side setback. So his whole contemplation was, well, if you're that far away, and you've given this extra 20 feet away from the woodland and the creek, we, we're just trying to center it as best we could so as to have the minimum impact. About the definition of flag lots, the only other thought I can have is, I mean, if, if the commission preferred, we could modify the map and move it back over that 20 feet, which was our original submittal. It was an afterthought that we had this epiphany about how we'd have less impact and a better project if we went this route. And then by definition, if both public and private access count towards not being a flag lot by definition, we'd be willing to accommodate that too, at your discretion, if you prefer that. We just thought this was the best thing to move forward, and there was in fact a revision period that we went through, because the original submittal was in fact that way. And then Chris Tibbetts is our civil engineer with RSA, and he'll come up and talk to the efforts we made to basically find ourselves as, as within your prescriptive zoning and general plan requirements as we could be. And that's why we were grateful to know that, that the staff report came out in favor, because we think we've made a great effort to try to be within those parameters, and we feel like we've been, we've done that successfully. So thank you. If you have any other, do you have any questions?
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question for you. So that 20-feet strip, I can't really tell, is the existing dirt road up there on that strip?
No, it's further northerly, so that the neighbor's driveway, if you see, if you look up at that exhibit, see how we have the culvert southerly?
Yes.
And then that's their culvert. The creek continues onto the other side of their asphalted access.
Yes.
So that the area in the 20 feet is sort of bordered by a fence line along the property line. There, this property, the, the fence lines are very accurate. It's impressive because they're, they're very old, and they've been there for a long time. So we, all you have there is, you've got this row of primarily oak trees and other habitat, and so we, we just moved away from that a little bit. There, you can see.
I see, okay. So it's really, the 20-foot is for the line of trees?
It gives us some protection, so it would be, it, it might be further landscaped or enhanced with natural features, but it's, it's an area of non-use, because it's, although it's part of the remainder parcel, we're required to only be a half an acre. So staying within that confine of the zoning code, we were able to protect that area without exceeding the minimum, or the maximum lot size for the split.
Which is half acre.
Half an acre, yeah. In fact, we had a lot of discussion about that. We thought that it had to be exactly a half an acre. There was no leeway, you know, that it had to be just a half an acre, because the code is written rather.
And you used quarter inch scale to get there, right?
Yes.
So, so you created this extremely odd-looking lot, simply to maximize the usability of your half acre?
It does that too, and it keeps us in that zone. As you can see, the, the, the area has been used as grazing. Historically, it was a sheep farm, the same family, and it's why I can shed a little light about that other parcel and some of the history, is this, the Sander LLC is, the Sander family's owned this parcel, as well as one of their current cousins owns that neighboring parcel, and the two, what we'll call separate for assessment purpose county parcels, the rectangles we saw on the other exhibit. They've had this in their family since the 1880s, and they made an accommodation, I believe, in 1982 when they did a, they filed a parcel map that has some extraordinary language on it that limited the use of that section that that side of the family ended up with in town. And it is a very, we've had a chance to discuss it, Noah and I, and it's a very unique situation. I've never seen a map with the kind of notation that's on it from 1982. It's very out of the ordinary. But it is what we have to live with at this point, because, you know, we have these other county parcels that are actually part of these parcels.
So that, you're saying that 20-foot is, is basically unusable by anybody?
It will be, able to be used by all of the, the other occupants of the area that are naturally, there are the birds and the.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's not buildable.
No.
It's not farmable.
No.
And it's neither buildable nor farmable at the present time.
I mean, if, if you didn't do the, could you, if you wanted to try to farm under the oak canopy, but I think that we have some provisions insofar as protecting those trees anyway. So it'd be unlikely that it would be farmed, because you'd be smack up against that row of oak trees that would, for other purposes and reasons, be preserved by other provisions in the code, I think. So.
Then I'd like to suggest that that would be perfect for inclusion in this lot, because it's in the A20 district. This is part that's not usable for agriculture.
It's, I think it's in the findings that, that were presented, that it says that no oak trees, or it might say any trees may be cut without, I think there was some provision that prohibits the cutting of trees if we get this approval. Yes. And the only other thing that did pop up, and I, I think it's been clarified, but, and it is, it was a fortunate thing that they put in a six-inch sewer there, but, so we will be required to tap into both the water and the sewer. We've assumed that. We haven't proposed anything. We, we did a well on the remainder parcel, and I believe we were requested to make that water analysis, but it's not really pertinent to our request for the subdivision. I think it plays into other things on the remainder parcel later.
Could you or Chris explain to me the temporary rock pile?
That pile of rocks?
Well, it's labeled temporary rock pile, and having had some experience with temporary rock piles, lengthy experience, I would say, I'm, I'm curious as to how temporary it is and what happens to it.
Those rocks, as things transition here, as I said, the Sander LLC has had the property for a long time. I'm now having a greater influence on the future happenings there. The rock pile would be moved out of that location so as to clean up the front, but we'd like to preserve those rocks for the use of garden walls and different kinds of things. We believe they were brought there by a previous friend and helper of the Sander family, who had the opportunity to obtain those and had an idea that someday he would use them, and, and that never came to fruition, so there they lie. But we would be happy to take direction on that too, if it made a difference. They're, they're not native rocks from that particular site. They were brought in for purposes of landscape.
Yeah, I mean, it may be that simply using the word temporary invites more questions than you would want to answer. If it were just a rock pile, I probably wouldn't have asked. But to call it a temporary rock pile suggests that there is a plan to do something.
We would use them for landscape, yes.
And, and then, you know, I don't know that you want to be committed to any particular plan, but, but it does invite the question, where are the rocks going?
I, if I, all I can say is that on the occasions when I've had to build a retaining wall out of natural stone, when I go to buy those baskets, they're pretty expensive. So we, we wanted to preserve it if we could for use. It's a nice-looking rock, as rock goes.
Any more questions?
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
David, would you like to start the discussion?
Public hearing. Ms. Kistner, maybe invite public comment?
Close public comment. Oh, I didn't open public comment. Sorry. Is that one, is there any public comment? We just take the podium, podium, please. Thank you, Noah.
Hello? Thank you for having me, and thanks for being here. My name is Anthony Pallotti. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Helena. I actually live on Chibley Circle, and I'm very familiar with this parcel. I grew up there playing some, you know, friends and stuff. And it's really interesting. I think it's a pretty interesting and unique idea. I'm also a realtor, and, you know, I just simply want to say I'm in support of it, because we need housing, and I, you know, really just don't see it bothering anything else. Every time I drive up Madrona, you know, you never really notice those, you know, that parcel is back there unless you turn onto that road and go back there. You wouldn't even really see the house unless you knew it was there. So, yeah, I'm in support of it, and that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's, my name is Joel Toller, 481 Crystal Springs Road. And I just want to say I'm also in support of the project. And I know that the applicant has spent quite a bit of time out on the property, and although it may seem like an interesting configuration, there's some logic to it and preservation of the oaks and the land that's out there. So hopefully he'll take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Toller. Any more public comment? We'll close public comment.
David, would you like to start the discussion?
I actually have nothing further to say on this.
John?
Well, I mean, the A20 is in part intended to reserve land for future growth for the city. Something moves out of the reserve area, they move the urban limit line. I just think it would be wise if we are to move to cut parcels in here, as they are allowed to do. it would be wise if we are to move to cut parcels in here, as they are allowed to do, even though seemingly some of the rules are a little arcane and very strange. And this code section is not written to be understandable, so at some point I would suggest we take a look at it and try to clean it up. But nonetheless, I would think if we're going to agree to parcels here, we should agree to parcels that contribute to, quote, "the future orderly development of the city." And I think a flag lot, and I'm going to keep calling it a flag lot, with a 20-foot undevelopable strip in front of it, does not contribute to future orderly growth. So, dividing it's fine, completely legal. I just think this is such an odd lot, we should ask the applicant to either A, correct the odd parts of it, or B, we should move forward with it as a flag, which I really truly believe it is.
Ms. Monet?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate and respect the care that was taken in making this so-called odd lot, you know, in terms of preserving, you know, being ecologically aware. And I don't see any advantage to, I agree with Commissioner Hardy, I don't see any advantage to making a flag lot or making any changes at all to it. I, I think it's, so far, it sounds like a good project. I would like, I do support it, but I would like some language that reflects what Commissioner Hardy mentioned about the, oh, wait, about the, okay, let me take that back because what was explained by the applicant, that the siding of the house was actually the siding of the whole area that could have a house on it. It sounds like it has, that the entire property has been vetted with respect to the biological analysis. So, I, thank you for clarifying that. It wasn't clear to me, anyway, in the report. So, I don't have any problem with it. I think at this point, you know, I, I think it fits in with what we're doing. Who knows what it's going to be, what, you know, what it's going to be in the future? And whatever it is, it will be subject to all of the, you know, affordable housing and orderly development of the city that is on the books. So, I'm, I'm okay with what's happening at this point.
Commissioner Hardy?
I'd like to start with a question of our Public Works Director. I'm struggling to understand the apparent difference between the driveway requirements described in Condition 22 and those described in 23. 22 says it's a minimum paved width of 12 feet plus two-foot shoulders on each side for a total of 16 feet. And then 23 says it shall provide a full 10-foot wide, I think maybe that means width, a full 10 feet of width with class, two-foot Class II aggregate-based shoulders. Is this 10 feet plus shoulders or 12 feet plus shoulders? Is there a mistake there? Should they be describing the same requirements? Or am I missing something?
I'm rereading this right now, sorry.
Thank you.
It seems like the condition should be blended to require the access drive width of 22 with the structural rating of H2-0 for the parcel one access point.
What's the minimum paved width then?
12 feet.
And that's in 22?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, if...
Could be 12 feet because this is access for two parcels now, correct?
So, that's the access drive definition?
Yeah. But doesn't it call for...
Microphone.
So, it would...
Microphone.
Does it call for a minimum of 12? And a max, and a, and a width of 16 if it's more than 100 feet long? So, this access to the second parcel, now that it's an access drive, is more than 100 feet long?
So, it's important to recognize with the remainder parcel, we cannot put any conditions on development of the remainder. So, if the concern...
Yeah, but you can for the access drive to the, to the first parcel.
The parcel one.
Yeah, which means that has to be 16 feet wide.
It's only a two-parcel access to the point where they divide.
But they're calling it an access drive. An access drive means something particular in our code.
I understand, but it's, it's only...
And our code says 16 feet if it's more than 100 feet long.
It's only a two-parcel access to the point where they divide.
And it says if it's more than 100 feet long, it's 16 feet.
But it's not 100 feet to the point where they divide.
Well, I don't know, but I don't think so.
Is it?
It's probably not.
Actually, could the applicant address that?
It's probably not, but our access drive standard doesn't think about that.
I thought we should put Chris on the spot.
You, you can see, I think on that, does that exhibit have the hammerhead turnaround? I can't see it well enough. So, that we have, in the area of the existing access drive that is on the, the bottom of the parcel, we'll say, that runs along the access drive that we're contemplating, that's where we'll be meeting fire truck turnaround requirements. And that, that whole length there, I'm guessing is about 120 feet all the way to the back. So, I, Chris, can you help me with the length of the hammerhead? I would say that would be the governing, the, the length. The hammerhead's a 60, right? So, 60, so we're under the 100 because at the end of the hammerhead, it's no longer servicing two. The hammerhead will function to service both to some degree, even though the existing structure is way up there.
I'm not sure our access drive standards recognizes that. I think it's, I think it's the length of the whole.
Nonetheless, if we need the 12 feet of asphalt, we're, that standard with the two feet of shoulders, I believe by definition, the 16 feet we're talking about? So, that it's 12 feet of asphalt and two feet of shoulder on either side, which is typically the minimum standard, yes. And we're, we're intending to provide that for that area.
And the 16 feet is to provide double passage either way. That's why, that's why it's 16 feet.
I'm not sure why it's that. I just know it's very common in almost all jurisdictions.
I'm a transportation dude. I can tell you that's why it's 16 feet.
Commissioner Pont, I, just by using my fingers and looking at the scale, it looks like it's about 80 foot to the center of the hammerhead. Would that make sense?
I, I'd have to get one out, too. It's close to that, yeah, because we're talking about from the property line if the hammerhead is 60. Although, we're not, we're not opposed to the minimum standard of the 16 feet, as Commissioner Pont is pointing out, which is a typical standard, anyway, 12 feet of asphalt and two feet of shoulder on each side. So, with that said, I don't know if we have to contemplate whether it's 100 feet or 120.
You could break up some of that rock for the shoulder.
I mean, we, our goal is to have something that is both aesthetically pleasing but very functional, too. So, yes, those minimum standards are minimums, and, and perhaps if there's room for, we'd even like more. But just to say that our pinch point being the culvert, we'll do, we will meet that minimum requirement every place we need to. That's our intention.
Given that we still don't have, at least for my purposes, a complete response on the 22-23 condition of approval, I'd like to suggest we take a short break, give staff an opportunity if they need it. If you tell me you don't, fine, to put their heads together so that when we get to the end of the discussion and we're ready to make a motion, we have final language for the related condition of approval.
I, I could probably answer that. 22 is a standalone and access drive requirement condition. 23 is providing that access easement and specifying what your ratings are. There's a 10-foot there, it should be 12 feet. So, I would just correct the typo of 10 to 12, and we're good.
Excellent.
Thank you again.
And I did scale it, the 80 feet goes to the edge of the, the far edge of the hammerhead.
Wow, so it's a laugh, but that's...
But the raining part of the driveway still exceeds 100 feet. And I don't think our standards eliminate anything like that.
God.
I don't think they say, once you pass the first unit, you can go ahead and reduce the size. I don't remember reading that.
Is, what's the concern?
What's the concern? That now we've got an access driveway that doesn't meet our access driveway standards.
But it's an existing condition, and there's no development proposed beyond what the map is requesting.
I, I think, well, I disagree with you, John, as, as to how to interpret the ordinance. I think the 100-foot requirement applies to the shared length. I don't think it applies, or that standard, beyond the area that's shared. That said, in the area that is shared, there's potential for two-way traffic. The reason for these standards, amongst other things, is to minimize, if not eliminate, the potential for conflict with emergency service vehicles. So, if the applicant is willing to construct this shared driveway to 16 feet, I think that's a great outcome, although I think that's more than the code requires.
There's another provision, there's actually a limiting provision in the code because of the concern for maintaining as much agricultural use on the raining parcel and in general the A-20 district, that there's a provision in the code that has to do with how much of your land you may use outside of agricultural uses. And specifically, there's a provision that limits the width of an access drive, I believe, to 12 feet for two-thirds of the parcel to not be counted towards your non-developed area. So, it's actually, there's a specific provision that limits your ability to have, if I wanted to have a 20-foot driveway, I couldn't because there is a provision that limits it to that 12 feet.
Well, it's, it's under standards for two acres or greater, and it says all structures, driveways, except for a 16-foot wide driveway.
Excuse me.
16 feet wide driveway, no greater than two-thirds the length of the parcel.
Right, so 12.
So, it's not 12, it's 16.
I'm sorry, 16-foot, including the shoulders?
Yes, so...
I, I think, public comment's over, and I...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm ready to accept a motion as to whether we approve this or not.
I'll move approval with the correction of the Public Works Condition of Approval 23, so that that reads 12 feet of width rather than 10. Well, let me back up. I do think 12 plus four foot of shoulder is, is a good idea. So, if the applicant does not object, and the indication is no, then I'd like the condition to be modified to require 12 feet plus four feet of shoulder.
Second.
So, 23 and 22 read the same. So, we have a total of 16 feet of pavement within the access easement.
Well, wouldn't that be 12 feet of pavement and four feet of shoulder?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, a second motion.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
No.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a request by Greg and Kristen Fowler for adoption of a resolution approving a demolition permit and design review in order to demolish an existing single-family residence and associated structures to accommodate the construction of a new singly, single-family home and garage on the property located at 2600 Sulphur Springs Avenue in the A-20 zoning district. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. Just for a little background on the, on the property in question, there is a 20-foot-wide private easement for roadway, for a roadway that exists across a portion of the property, as well as the property is immediately to the southeast. This easement provides legal access to Sulphur Springs Avenue for approximately seven adjacent parcels. There is a city water line that runs through a portion of the property as well, and the city has historically used a prescriptive easement for public access across a portion of that southern property line. The existing 22,500-square-foot parcel is currently developed with an approximately 1,400-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-story, single-family residence with a 500-square-foot attached garage and a pool that was constructed in approximately 1966. The applicant is seeking a demolition permit and design review approval to demolish the existing home and associated structures in order to construct a new 4,093-square-foot single-story, single-family residence with a 565-square-foot detached garage. The proposed home includes a two-story front entry with an elevated observation deck. Stated in the plans, the new home would be finished with a variety of modern materials, including cement facade with horizontal slatted wood screening, steel I-beam columns, powder-coated aluminum windows, and a standing seam metal roof. The height of the proposed home at its highest point to the top of the observation deck would be approximately 25 feet, which is approximately 10 feet taller than the existing home. The site is zoned 20-acre agriculture. However, for lots that, less than two acres in area, the development regulations and floor area ratio, for lots less than two acres in A-20, revert to the low-density, one-acre minimum zoning district. As far as floor area ratio is concerned, the 22,500-square-foot parcel has a maximum FAR of .2025, which would allow a maximum gross floor area of 4,556 square feet, excluding any applicable FAR exemptions. The applicant is proposing a 4,093-square-foot home with the 565-square-foot garage, as previously stated. And with the 200-square-foot FAR exemption for covered parking, the, the floor area for the parcel is 4,258 square feet for a FAR of .198, which is approximately 300 square feet less than the maximum permitted on the site. The proposed project does meet all development standards as required by the municipal code, including lot coverage, setbacks, floor area, height. While the proposed home is quite large, a majority of the structure is only one-story in height and is located in a more rural area of town where large homes on larger-than-average parcels are common. There are no properties near the proposed project site would be negatively affected by the development of the project at this location. And for these reasons, staff believes that the, the proposed project is consistent with required design review findings, and recommends that the planning commission determine the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to Section 15301 and 15303, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting demolition permit and design review approval for the proposed demolition and new construction on the property at 2600 Sulphur Springs. With that, staff would like to add a condition regarding dedication of a 15-foot easement on the southern side of the property. And that condition reads, prior to the issuance of a building permit by city to applicant for construction of improvements on the property, applicant shall execute, acknowledge, and record an irrevocable offer of dedication in the official records of Napa County in a form of a content acceptable to the city manager and city attorney, providing for the dedication of the southeasterly 15 feet of the property to the city of St. Helena for public right-of-way and utility purposes. Upon acceptance of said irrevocable offer of dedication by resolution of the city council of the city of St. Helena, the city shall thereafter be responsible for the installation, construction, and maintenance... the installation, construction, and maintenance of all public improvements thereon. Correct. With that, we'll answer any questions you may have, to the best of our ability. The applicant and their representatives are here to answer, and the Public Works Director as well, if you have any questions.
How does the proposed irrevocable dedication relate to the discussion of the staff report of Vallejo Street?
That dedication would accommodate the future extension of Vallejo Street, should it be required, or should the city decide to do it?
What confuses me is the graphic location map on Sheet A 0.0.
Yeah, that is a little confusing. So I believe the applicant took this off Google Earth, and for some reason, that is unclear to us, they decided that Vallejo Street was actually the private driveways for the residents. So that is not actually where the Vallejo Street extension would go. That extension is on the other side of the home. So that is simply a function of a programmer or someone with Google.
They being Google.
So, if I understood the staff report correctly, the city has been using a portion of this property for access. There was reference to a prescriptive easement.
That's correct, and that's down here.
And, okay, on the southeastern corner.
Correct.
As the condition describes.
Correct.
How do you get from there to Vallejo Street? I mean, I understand there's a lot of vegetation in this aerial view, but...
Believe it or not, there is a passage all the way to Vallejo Street from Sulphur Springs, southern...
On this southeastern side of the...
It's a little rough, but it's there.
Oh, I see.
Okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you.
Planner Heacock, this 15-foot easement, irrevocable easement, is that, I understand there's also city lines underneath the, shall we call it for purposes of, that it is actually a street at this point, Vallejo Street. That 15-foot would both accommodate the street, which is a very narrow size for a street, plus the infrastructure, the city infrastructure, which is beneath the street?
So it would. On the applicant's property, it's likely that future development on the properties to the south, we would need some dedication from them as well to get the full width that we would want for Vallejo Street in the future. But all we can do with the applicant's property is get what we can get, and it would accommodate an easement for the water line as well.
And is there a sewer line up there too, or just a water line?
I believe it's just a water line.
Okay. In fact, is this, is there a, oh, there it is, a septic, okay, go on. All right, thank you.
I had a question. On page C 4.0, I just couldn't tell what the setback was. I'm assuming that, let's see, at the top, right here, I don't know what the directions are, but is that the side of the house? So it's a side setback, so it's 10 feet, or is that the front of the house?
No, that's the side. Correct, it's 10 feet.
And it is 10 feet, even at that corner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have no further questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Block. I'm here tonight representing Greg and Kristen Fowler. Greg Fowler had some surgery today, and Kristen is home taking care of him, so they could not be here, although they very much wanted to be, and I hope you won't hold that against them. I'd like to speak to this new condition requiring the 15-foot dedication, which we received for the first time at 3:08 PM this afternoon. The issue of that dedication and a public right-ofway has a fairly long history. Noah and I have been around and around. I've had months of correspondence with the city attorney. The bottom line is, we thought we had it all worked out. We had voluntarily agreed to the 15-foot setback and accommodated, as well as offered, an easement for the water line. So we were a little bit surprised when this condition came in at 3 o'clock this afternoon for the mandatory dedication of that property. You know, this whole thing started in 2016, when at that time, the city wanted a 30-foot dedication. And I took the position, the Foulers came to see me, and I did some research, and I came to the conclusion that you could not condition design review on dedication of public right-ofway. As you know, conditions of approval have to have a nexus or a link to the impacts that would be generated if the project were approved, and there's no nexus...
Dolan.
Dolan Nolan, the lawyers call it, after two famous Supreme Court cases. There's no nexus between approving the design of a house and requiring public right-ofway. So that was my position. The city couldn't require this dedication. And that's where Noah and I got into a long discussion about it, and that's where the city attorney got involved, and he then turned it back to Noah. We had a meeting with all the principals, and that was in February of this year. And I thought we'd worked it out. And I was very surprised at 3:08 PM this afternoon to get this new condition of approval for a dedication of right-ofway. I would just say, I hope that the commission will approve the design review per the staff report and will reject this requirement for a dedication of right-ofway. And I say that for three reasons. First of all, I think it's illegal for the city, in exchange for approving design review, to require the dedication of right-ofway. It's a taking without paying just compensation. You're depriving somebody of their property without paying them for it. The way this condition of approval was raised is totally improper. I mean, this is kind of zoning by ambush. I mean, I've been discussing this with the city since late 2016, early 2017, and I thought that we had it all resolved. In fact, I have an email, Noah and I did an exchange of confirming emails after our meeting in February, and he says, "We agree that the design should provide a 15-foot setback from the southeastern property line, and that no structures or development features should be included in this portion of the property. This is intended to allow the city to deem the project consistent with the general plan by providing the future ability to construct an extension of Vallejo Street." So there, I read that, I don't mean to put words in Noah's mouth, there's your planning director saying, "Okay, the applicants have agreed to a 15-foot setback, so if the city ever wants to extend Vallejo, they can come in and they can purchase that property. And therefore, this project is fine. It's consistent with the general plan." The city attorney then jumps in with this requirement of a dedication. That's really not a, I don't see that as a legal, it's not legally required. He's really changing the business deal, so to speak. And it's unnecessary, because if and when the city ever wants that property, they simply buy it. They condemn it, and they pay just, they pay the fair market value of whatever that 15-foot strip is, and there you have it. We've already agreed not to build any permanent structures in there, and to keep the landscaping to a minimum, easily removed. So why the condition, the illegal condition of a mandatory dedication? My view is that the city is trying to get something for nothing. They are taking advantage of the Foulers' need for design approval of their house to grab that 15-foot strip of property without paying for it. That's all this comes down to. And it's not the way to go about it. It's unnecessary. The Foulers will not obstruct the extension of Vallejo Street, and if and when the city wants to extend it, they can do what they're going to have to do with other property owners as well, and that's just condemn the property and take it, or negotiate a sale with the owners. So I ask the commission to approve, per the staff's report, and reject this new condition introduced at 3 o'clock this afternoon by the city attorney, contrary to my agreement with the planning director.
I have a question for the applicant. My question is, Vallejo Street exists today as a, I've driven on that street many times in days of old, as I was dropping my kids off to the White Barn. And it's, it may not be a public street, but it's passable, it's been passable for years and years and years. I'd be surprised if the applicant wouldn't acknowledge that it's already a commonly-used path for cars. It's poorly maintained, and that there's also already a water line that's underneath the street. It seems surprising that you would anticipate a right to something that vastly predates the ownership of this property.
Let me clarify. We don't dispute the public's right to use the dirt road. That is what you're calling Vallejo Street. That dirt road, Vallejo Street, the paving ends at some point, and it becomes a dirt road, and that dirt road goes through to Sulphur Spring. A portion of it is on the Fowler property, eight feet at the widest, I think. Not 15, but I'm guessing eight, nine feet at the widest. It kind of meanders across the edge of the Fowler property. That has been used forever, and even though there's never been an express dedication of a public right-ofway by the owners of the Fowler property, there is what I think is an implied dedication, what is sometimes referred to as a prescriptive easement. That is a right for the public to continue to use that dirt road. The Foulers do not contest that, including the portion of the dirt road that's on their property. They don't dispute the public's right to keep using that, just as they always have. So nothing about this design review is going to interfere with or impede the public's right to continue using that dirt road. So again, why the mandatory 15-foot dedication?
Wouldn't it be from a health and safety perspective? Because isn't the point of this that if there was some blockage on the lower Vallejo Street, or if there was a blockage on Sulphur Spring, that you'd want access for the homes, the White Barn, for example, or other homes, to be able to use that path? And this is merely sort of guaranteeing the continued use of that. Is it not?
No, the 15-foot dedication has nothing to do with the dirt road or the public's right to continue using the dirt road. The city doesn't need any dedication by the Foulers to keep that use intact and continuing, because there has already been a dedication of that dirt road to the public. Not an express dedication, but an implied dedication.
But didn't the Foulers block the road a year or two ago? I mean, wasn't that actually, I mean, I'm not sure that your clients actually acknowledged that.
No, I'm representing their position, and it is true that for a day, they put a barrier across that road based on their misunderstanding. Everybody, at one point or another, has been confused about the easements and the rights and obligations on these properties, especially since the use of the dirt road is based on history, historical use. But they now understand that the public has a right to use that dirt road, and since that misunderstanding, which only lasted 24 to 48 hours, they immediately removed the barrier when I explained what was going on, and they will not obstruct that public right-ofway any further. But again, the question is, does the city, is it entitled to require them to dedicate 15 feet of their property as a condition for approving this design review?
I've also got a question or two. Does the city have an easement for the water line?
No, it encroaches. And we've never made an issue of that. It's not an issue. We're glad to accommodate.
Well, that would be subsurface, so that would be different than a surface easement.
Yeah, because there can be no prescriptive easement.
Either prescriptive or indeed.
That's right.
So we're dealing with essentially two prescriptive easements, essentially. One for the water line, which is a subsurface prescriptive easement.
You can't have a subsurface prescriptive easement, because there can be no open notorious and adverse possession, since nobody can see it. It's under the ground, and therefore...
I'll send you the case. It can happen.
They can do that, yeah.
It's moot, because we offered from day one here to record an express easement for that water line. Not an issue.
You will give an easement for the water line?
Absolutely. Whatever you do tonight, we'll give an easement for the water line.
Okay. But that would be a subsurface easement, not a transportation easement. So you're more worried about the transportation easement?
Well, we're more worried about the 15 feet.
About the 15 feet.
Well, my personal opinion is, I think we should continue this, and we should have the city attorney address the subject with us.
I'm happy to provide some additional input if the applicant would like me to chime in versus a continuance. So Mr. Block is absolutely accurate in everything he stated with regards to our communication. However, there are a few other things that are worth noting, and some of which precipitated a late notice to him and his clients, which I do apologize for. I do not like to operate that way. Unfortunately, today, we found a resolution, and it's from 1971, but it specifically says, "It's a resolution of the Council of the City of St. Helena finding declaring that certain areas shall be reserved for future dedication as public streets. Whereas certain areas in the City of St. Helena have been used by the general public for a long period of time as public thoroughfares, even though, even through portions thereof have never, even though portions thereof have never been dedicated to the city, and some areas are as follows. Vallejo Street from Crane Avenue to Sulphur Springs, it's approximately .64 miles." And there's additional information, "Whereas the future development of property along and beyond said areas would require the dedication of a strip in and about said areas for public street purposes and the construction therein of a paved street, curb, and gutter, and in some cases, a sidewalk." And it continues. So just new information, which we found today, so I do apologize. In addition to the information Mr. Block identified, the commission may remember that administrative determination requiring a 30-foot setback from that property line was brought before the commission was noticed to everyone, was approved administratively by staff, never appealed. So essentially, the due process to appeal that determination has occurred, and there was no appeal filed. The general plan circulation graphic identifies Vallejo Street connecting to Sulphur Springs in this location. And that is anticipated that Vallejo Street would be 30 feet wide to meet the minimum street standard for circulation in that area. The city attorney's suggested condition coming in late today, which I do apologize, is 100% to ensure and preserve the public access, including public safety across that portion, to ensure folks can get to Sulphur Springs. And it is worth noting that there is a private access easement, and I understand Mr. Block will say that the validity of that is in question, which is 20 feet along that southern property line. Similarly, if this easement is required, then that would preserve access across the portion of the parcel for those folks who may or may not have that rights to the 20 feet. From the city's perspective, it is within the right of the commission to require.
So are you saying there's already a 30-foot easement across that?
I'm saying staff previously made a determination that the setback from that property line should be 30 feet to ensure Vallejo Street could be connected, and there was never an appeal to that determination.
When was that made?
Sometime in early 2017. It was brought before the commission.
So Director Houss, is that still in existence then, this 30-foot setback?
It's within the purview of the commission to approve the setback proposed, because in retrospect, the 30-foot right-ofway of Vallejo Street could be accommodated half on the Fowler property and half on the adjacent property, and some future point when Vallejo Street was to be extended, and to the point Mr. Block made, the current access splits the partial line already.
Right, but the initial 2007 finding or determination was that it would be a 30-foot setback.
17.
A staff-level determination that the planning commission is able to act.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Monette, what are you saying?
I heard it was last year, 2017.
Oh, 2017.
That's correct. So, the Fowler's came to the city and said, "We want to develop our property, but we don't want to pay for multiple design revisions over and over again." What's the setback that the city would require? The city staff looked at the circulation element of the general plan, which identifies Vallejo Street connecting, looked at the minimum street standard, which is 30 feet, and said, "We would need 30 feet there." That was written, noticed, never appealed.
And was that appealable at that time?
Absolutely.
And what was the appeal timeframe?
30 days.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 14 days, I believe, from the date of decision.
Two weeks. And so, therefore, that this new plan is actually not consistent with that determination that was made in the last year.
That's correct, because the formal application allowed staff additional time, because there's fees associated with.
I understand.
And that allowed staff additional time to research all of the easement situations that are occurring there, find the existing resolution that the council talked about, and engage with the Public Works Department, whereby we were able to determine that a 15-foot setback would accommodate future extension of Vallejo Street and maintain the current access.
Which is a more beneficial to the property owners.
Absolutely.
But the property owners seem to be arguing at this point that they'd rather us pay for that access, rather than to acknowledge the access that already exists and has existed forever, back to 1971 at the earliest.
No, I don't think that's an accurate statement.
Okay, what is the statement?
Mr. Block was very clear, and I want to say, I really appreciate your straightforward presentation. Not all advocates are so direct and balanced in their description of the facts, but what he said is that his clients acknowledge and are fine with acknowledging the existence of an implied dedication of a public right-of-way over the existing road, which may extend at some point, I believe he said, as much as eight feet into the Fowler's property. And the objection is to the condition requiring an irrevocable offer of dedication, which he has said very succinctly, is, I'll rephrase it, a violation of the Fifth Amendment requirement that land be taken only with compensation, and the more particular references to the Supreme Court decisions generally known in shorthand as Nolan and Dolan. These are the nexus decisions, both, if I recall correctly, written by Scalia. They're a very important part of takings law. And yes, strictly speaking, the difference between a required dedication and nothing, in this case, is that the city would have to pay if and when the city should decide to extend Vallejo Street. This is one of those moments when, personally, I think, you know, the absence from our meetings of the city attorney has some real consequence, you know, for better or worse. I've spent a lot of time myself thinking about and occasionally arguing with city attorneys about how to apply Nolan and Dolan to conditions of approval. I have no interest in asserting myself as...
You're not our attorney.
A sort of substantive city attorney, but I'm not interested in making a decision on that condition of approval without the city attorney present, frankly. And it seems to me that a continuance would lead to one of two process outcomes, either between now and, and I'm thinking continuance to a date certain, of course, between now and the next date, whatever that is, perhaps Mr. Block and the city attorney and our planning director would reach a meeting of the minds, and then everything would go very smoothly, or perhaps not, in which case, I wouldn't want the city attorney here before we voted on this.
Hey, I have a question, can I ask you? What's the difference between, I mean, is this the same as eminent domain? I mean, with eminent domain, you do get, you do get to have, you do have to pay something. So, this is sort of circumventing that?
The issues here are a kind of...
I am asking a question.
...regulatory-taking issue. That's why they come under the Nolan and Dolan line of cases. An eminent domain proceeding would be one in which the city was, in fact, proposing to pay. So...
So, this is a way to avoid that?
Yes, it is, and that's why the question of whether or not it's regulatory-taking and violation of the Fifth Amendment requirement for compensation is apt.
It's basically a question of quid pro quo, really, when you get down to it. If he gives, if we request the, if we request the dedication, what are they getting for it?
Right, and it sounds like nothing, yeah.
It's not that exactly.
It's not, it's close enough to argue about it.
That's why we need the town attorney.
And that's why we need the city attorney.
And also, Commissioner Monette, sort of a key thing also to remember is prior use, which predates by far ownership of the property and of city regulations that have already addressed the extension of Vallejo Street, which would then claim that, in fact, the city has a prior claim to any of these.
Well, yeah, but I saw, from what I heard, there is no threat that, you know, I mean, there's no difference. The land, they're willing, they made an agreement that the land would be available. But the other question I have, the other question I have is, how do you reconcile this irrevocable offer of dedication for only 15 feet, when you, when there's already been passed a requirement for 30 feet? So, how is that?
I think I can simplify this. First of all, I really appreciate the intensity and earnestness with which the commissioners are grappling with this issue, because it's consumed the Fowler's for the last year and a half. I don't agree that there was a prior determination about 30 feet, but rather than go into all of that, let me just say, if the only way the commission will approve their design review permit this evening is with that condition of a 15-foot dedication, then they voluntarily accept that condition, and they will make the offer of dedication.
Okay, so they really want it tonight?
They, the process is killing us. We can't take any more process. I appreciate it. This is the first time you're grappling with this. They're very interesting and involved issues, but the Fowler's just want to build a house, really.
Your clients waving their right of appeal? Is that what you're telling me?
They will voluntarily accept this condition of a 15-foot offer of dedication.
They must be really worn out.
They are completely beaten into the ground by this. And I know, you know, everybody had good intentions, but this is design review of a house.
So, two more weeks would be unacceptable, yeah.
No, we'll do it. We have an understanding, I think, with the planning director, that, or it's in the condition, that there can be some landscaping in that area, and there can be a fence, or there'll be some, you know, some privacy, but nothing permanent, and nothing that would interfere with a future extension of Vallejo Street. There will be an offer of dedication of 15 feet.
You know, considering how long it takes to do something here, it could be 50 years before even anybody moves to make that a real street.
We know.
So, you know.
Well, this offer by the applicant, Director House, does this fit in with what Planner Heacock had earlier written, or is this a door number three sort of a situation?
They're completely accepting the condition.
Okay. And with, and...
They're not going to appeal it?
And so, therefore, Vice Chair Hardy, do you believe we still need the city attorney, Mr. Brown, to validate our discussion here?
No, I simply want to be sure that Mr. Block understands and conveys to his client that I wasn't suggesting a continuance in order to beat them down.
No.
I'll take responsibility with that.
Find myself honestly uncomfortable that I ask for the continuance, and you yield, but I do understand why that might be for your clients, the best outcome. So, I'm fine.
All right. Now, here, motion?
Chair Kistner?
Would you like to make the motion?
Did you open public comment?
Sure.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that would be good.
Open public comment, there's no public here. No public comment.
Okay, with that essential process taken care of, I move approval with the additional condition, as discussed, requiring an irrevocable offer of dedication for 15-foot easement to provide for the future extension of Vallejo Street.
Second.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes, with apologies to the applicant, yes.
Do you have an agenda forecast, Chris?
Just a brief department report. We are working with the general plan consultants to keep things moving, and I do plan on bringing a presentation to both the planning commission and the city council, just on an update and for the public's benefit as well, so to kind of check in. Nothing significant to report on that, but that'll probably occur in July. Just wanted to let everyone know to anticipate that, both in the public and on the commission. And I do want to acknowledge and identify that Chair Kistner's last meeting is next meeting, June 9th. She has not filed an application to renew her participation, I'm sorry, June 19th, and so that will be her last meeting. Thank you very much for your service, and we'll chat more about that then. And if anyone is watching, or if any of you know any qualified applicants, I would encourage you to file applications with the city clerk. We are still taking applications and vigorously encouraging applicants to apply.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.